Okay, thank you. Welcome back, everybody. The Reeve stepped out for a bit, and so we'll carry on. And we have seven point four Infrastructure Services Thin Lake River Bridge File. So, Mr. Bispalko?
Good afternoon, Council, and Merry Christmas. I'm here for a... I'm here to present an RFD on the Thin Lake River Bridge File Number BF seven zero nine two seven. At a regular meeting of Council on March twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, an RFD was presented titled Sidewalks on New Range Road four seven four Thin Lake River Bridge BF seven zero nine two seven, and that is Appendix A. The Council motion coming out of that presentation was that Council direct Administration to continue with the initially approved plan for the Thin Lake River Bridge BF seven zero nine two seven replacement project with sidewalks on both sides of the bridge at the budgeted cost of one point six five zero million dollars, and that's Appendix B. Administration has tendered the projects with three options: two sidewalks, one sidewalk, and no sidewalk. The lowest compliant tender is attached on Appendix C. The lowest compliant tender for a two sidewalk design is approximately four hundred and forty thousand dollars over the approved budget amount. The single sidewalk design is approximately two hundred and thirty one thousand dollars over the budgeted amount, and the no sidewalk design is approximately forty five thousand under the budget amount. Appendix C. The project was tendered with a winter construction timeline due to environmental constraints. Therefore, award of the tender will need to occur in a timely fashion. Additional funds are required if the dual sidewalk or single sidewalk options are still the direction of Council, and the tender is awarded in twenty twenty one. An additional four hundred thousand has been added to the preliminary twenty twenty two budget to cover the shortfall. However, if the tender is awarded in twenty twenty one, these additional funds will not have been allocated to the project. If the no sidewalk option is selected, an extra four hundred thousand dollars will not be required. Currently patrons of this fishing loca... currently patrons of this fishing location are parked on the side of the road, which creates safety concerns for passing traffic. If a space is created for anglers to fish safely on sidewalks or on a fishing platform, there may... There may increase... This may increase users and subsequently create traffic issues. Parking for the public at this location may be a concern and will need to be considered for all options. There's no reference to the strategic plan or legislation. Cost and source of funding, funding to come from the twenty twenty two capital budget. And Administration's recommended action is that Council direct Administration to proceed with the Bridge File BF seven zero nine two seven replacement on Range Road four seventy four, the bridge south of six sixty, secondary highway six sixty, using the no sidewalk option in the amount of one point six zero five million, four hundred and thirty eight dollars and forty cents.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a motion made by a previous counselor to go with a two sidewalk option. So that's in the books already, isn't it?
Yes, it is. With the budgeted amount of one point six five million. In an effort to stay within the budget that was allocated for it, the recommendation is to go with the no sidewalk option, in the... just in the interest of staying within the budget.
I think it's not a good idea not to have any sidewalks. There's two sidewalks there now, aren't there, on either side?
I don't believe there are any sidewalks on either side. It's just a bridge file, to the best of my knowledge.
There's...
Are there on... Okay, I apologize. Then there would be sidewalks.
On either side, yeah, there is, because people are fishing from either side.
You definitely... You definitely need at least one sidewalk on that to replace... I would say two to make it like it is, right? But I don't know if there was a motion in the past, or there might have been.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, to Brian, the motion was to have two, so I'm going to make a motion to go with option number three with a two sidewalk option.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor open for discussion.
So where... So if you... Let me understand. So if you pay... Or if you award it this year yet, the four hundred is there, but if you award it next year, it's not?
For all of Council, one point six five million has been allocated in the twenty twenty one budget. If we approve this tender for the one sidewalk or two sidewalk option, that would be over and above what was in the twenty twenty one budget. So if we award this, we would have to... And I might have to ask to Ms. Medeiisa or the CAO to help me with this. I don't know how we can do this budget-wise. Would we have to allocate or transfer more funds into this year's budget in order to award this for that price? Would we have to wait till January first of twenty twenty two to award this tender over the budget with the extra money allocated in it? I would have to ask for some assistance on that.
Through the Chair to Council, pretty simple, is the one point six five millions in the budget. If Council wants to go with option two or option three, I believe option three is on the table. Council just has to make a budget amendment, and in this case, the other four hundred and forty some thousand dollars would just come out of the cash flow reserve.
Can I just get a quick question here, though? Costs... Seems a bit pricey for a sidewalk. So define a sidewalk. Just a wooden walking path. I'm assuming maybe Counselor Carson will recognize the one that's there now, but I'm assuming it's just... Is it a wooden bridge, or is this a metal structure? And I just wonder what you'd think, Mr. Bispalko, about the extra cost?
Through the Chair for all of Council, in the original RFD, the plan, I believe, was on there. Now, what it is, it is concrete... It's a concrete pad that goes on the either... On either side of the bridge structure. Now, let me... On either side of the bridge structure, that would allow for passage, safe passes, safe passage utilizing the sidewalk. Now, if we... The major cost of that is the engineering and the hooking it onto the actual structure. So that is the majority of the cost, the engineering of having that put on. If we were to do it later, it would probably be more money, because then we would have to re-engineer what was there to hook on.
Okay. I just wondered if there are any way we can get any grant funding to go ahead with this? It's kind of a rec... It's more than just transportation. It's like a recreation issue, and it's really big. That bridge is used by a lot of people in the community, especially, well, everybody around Moose Lake that goes out to the Franchise Bay Campground or any other campgrounds out there. And then there's... Sorry, I can't... I lost my thought.
So through the Chair to Council, bridge funding from the province dried up probably ten, twelve years ago, and then for a while, they were doing what's called gap funding. They would fund work to be done between the bridge and where the bridge was being constructed. Gap funding disappeared probably three, maybe four years ago. There would be virtually no funding, no grant funding available. There's no programs that I'm aware of, and I don't think there are any programs that Corporate Services or Transportation is aware of. And any grant program that may pop up would delay the project while we had an application in for grant funding. I would suggest at this point there is no grant funding available or would be available for this bridge. I'm sure that either the General Manager of Corporate Services or Mr. Bispalko's people would have indicated that there is a possibility of some grant funding, but there hasn't been grant funding for bridges now for years. I would also, just as a side note, we're putting a bit of a box with this one at the administrative level, because the motion that was... So the motion that was moved back in March was that Council directs Administration to continue with the initially approved plan for the Thin Lake River Bridge replacement project with sidewalks on both sides. Counselor Kreviek is absolutely correct, at the budgeted cost of one point six five million. When tenders came in, we couldn't do... We couldn't do both of them. So we made the administrative recommendation to stay in budget. However, it's pretty simple for Council. If Council wants to go with the two bridge option, it's just to increase the budget, do a budget amendment, and I guess I would defer to the General Manager of Corporate Services, but likely the additional funding to come from cash flow reserves.
Any other questions?
Yeah, well, it's not a question, I guess, as much as a comment, and there's not really an asking, but man, I tell you, four hundred thousand bucks for two sidewalks is pretty expensive, for sure. And because it said in there that it's four hundred... Or four thousand per square meter, is that right then? So I don't get it. So is that... Like, what is... Explain that part, I guess. Is that what it worked out to be, an extra hundred?
Sorry, where are you looking at?
Well, right in the... The order of the magnitude cost for sidewalks to new bridge would likely be in the range of four thousand dollars per square meter. So I guess that works out to be the same, I suppose. Right in your first page there. So regardless, it's just it's a lot of money for a couple sidewalks.
And so I had kind of the same kind of concern and comments, though. Does it... Did... When we asked for that bridge to be tendered, did we also have them engineering it with the fact that we wanted sidewalks? So but no one said it had to be concrete sidewalks. So I was just assuming you'd have some wooden... You know, you'd extend the structure and then just put a wooden sidewalk or walk path or whatever.
To all of Council, again, I see what you're talking about. That's on the original RFD at the four thousand per square meter. As it's a bridge file and it's an engineered structure, I am guessing that the engineers felt that putting a couple of planks on the side of it would not suffice for the wear and tear or the stability of that sidewalk. On the plan itself, you can see where the concrete girders extend past the driving surface onto the... For the platforms, so it's one solid unit. And then the engineering for bracing and the piles associated with all of this to support that weight of those girders is the additional cost.
So I don't see the drawing in here.
So it... Sorry, it was on the... It was on the original RFD. I have it right here, and...
Well, I guess I'm just... Is it, like, considered a specialty item, I guess, or whatever? Like, couldn't you just build a wider bridge and then put a handrail up, like a meter away from the edge? Like, that's kind of what's there right now, right?
For all of Council, that is beyond my... I am not a bridge expert, and I will... I just... I can't answer that. It seems... It seems as simple as that, but at the end of the day, when we presented the two sidewalk option to the engineers, this is what they came up with. So there really wasn't a whole lot that we were going to question about it because it had to do with the bridge structure and the safety of individuals using it. And we're not bridge experts in order to say that we can do something different. So for us, what was presented in the drawings was what we accepted.
Mr. Chair, I know people fish from both sides of that bridge. Can we delay this for a year, or what? Or no? It has to be done?
For all of Council, what we could do, it is on our bridge replacement list. We could postpone it, as the structure itself, I'm guessing, would last another year if we had to. But this is a winter project item, because we have to do this. So we would have to do this, like I said, in the winter.
And then the cost will be escalating anyway, so...
Well, it would be similar to what it is this year, because it would have to be winter work anyway. Environmentally, we have to do this in the winter. So the costs wouldn't be much different. It'll just be whatever increase would be from one year to the next, but it would still be winter work.
Counselor Fad.
If we wait, we've been seeing a lot of increases across the board. If we wait another year, it's going to be another four hundred grand to get no sidewalks.
So do you have a... Yeah, I'm not quite happy with the price either, but we have a motion on the floor, and... No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of Council. Just a couple of quick things. These are engineered by people. So I can't really comment on the engineering. What I would suggest is, this was the cheapest tender of the ones that we received. So if we were to wait another year, I would probably guesstimate that we're probably looking at three to a five percent price increase if we were to wait. So two million dollars at five percent is... Yeah, exactly. So if Council wants to move ahead with this project, we are... This is probably, for now, the cheapest alternative. If we were to go back and re-engineer it, we'd incur new engineering costs. We would then incur all kinds of other costs. If this is an important project to Council to have this bridge with both sidewalks, then this is probably, for now, probably the best bet.
Okay. Well, Counselor Carson.
Yeah, I don't know what the value of holding it a year would be. I guess maybe I wonder if we just did one side, would... Could you retrofit a sidewalk on the other side if it came down to it? I mean, I know the bridge on six sixty is only one side, and they fish off of that. I think there has to be at least one, if not two, you know?
For... Yeah. For all of Council, I hear your comments, and I question that as well. So, well, what if we build the bridge this year and then a sidewalk next year? And my answer from the engineers was, because you have to do some boring into the side to make the structure sound, to hold up everything on the outskirts of it, like with the sidewalks, that it would end up costing more to retrofit than it would be to do it all at one time. So I did ask that question, thinking that we might be able to do this in a piecemeal kind of thing, but it's more of a task to do it that way than to do it once the first time. Whether one sidewalk or two sidewalks, that's a council decision. To me, I'll... I just carry out whatever decision is made, so... Yeah, but to answer that question, no, we can't do this after. It would be too much.
Yeah, okay, and I guess that's because that's where the river flows out, right? So do you have it on one side, at the same side it's a flow? But that kind of puts it on the wrong side, I think. You kind of have to have it on the east side of that road, right?
Well, they fish from both sides of that bridge. Always lots of people, so you'll be fishing from the road, from up the bridge. It's not very good, but whatever we decide, I mean, I'd like to have both sidewalks, but it's up to Council.
I guess my other question then would be, what would we have to sacrifice to get, you know, for that extra four hundred thousand? Like, is it just coming out of your bridge fund, then? Is that right, or...
For all of Council, I would have to defer that question to somebody a lot more financially intelligent than myself. I would suspect that could we... The funds that we had for twenty twenty two, would we just be able to transfer those over, or how would that work?
No, we just transferred seven hundred thousand dollars, Mr. Chair, this morning, from ID three forty nine, remember? And you, too, two million.
That's spoken for, Mike.
And Mr. Chair and members of Council, I would suggest that the simplest thing to do, without getting into twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, all the money's in one pot. The fact that one is labeled twenty twenty one and one's labeled twenty twenty two. The simplest thing to do is to prove the project at the current price with the additional funds to come out of cash flow reserves.
I understand that. I just don't want to get into a situation, six months from now, where Toulouse says, "Well, you could do that, except we had to build a bridge with two sidewalks, so there's four hundred thousand dollars we're missing," so...
Thank you. Thank you, too.
We'll round this off here, because we do have a motion on the floor for the third option, which was sidewalks on both sides, Counselor Fad, so no further questions. We'll have a vote on that motion. All in favor?
Thank you.
Did it pass? Did it pass?
Thank you, guys.
There's going to be no sidewalks or sidewalks.
You? Well, it's crazy to be...
You're on. It's the Grand Center Golf Course.
To be that much more expensive, like, it doesn't make sense to me, like, four hundred thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of Council. The next item on the agenda is a request from the Grand Center Golf and Country Club for a letter of support. The Grand Center Golf and Country Club is in the process of preparing a grant application for the Provincial Community Facility Enhancement Program, CFEP, and is requesting a letter of support from the MD of Bonneville. The Grand Center Golf and Country Club is in the process of starting several projects on the golf course that require some attention. A list of these projects is provided in a request which is attached as Appendix A. To help fund these projects, the Grand Center Golf and Country Club is preparing a CFEP grant application and has requested a letter of support from the MD. Under MD Policy Number one point zero one four, Letter of Support Policy, Administration is authorized to provide letters of support without Council approval, providing there is no associated monetary support required. However, given the nature of the grant, being a fifty percent cost sharing grant, Administration is wary of a potential for an implied financial commitment. As such, Administration is requesting Council to approve to provide the requested letter of support in principle only of the proposed projects at the golf course. They have not specifically asked for any money in the letter of support, but if they're asking for a letter of support on a fifty percent grant application, I could only assume that we are... We would probably be on the hook for the other fifty percent.
I'll just ask maybe Counselor Fad to speak to that one.
Yeah, fortunately, I don't know a lot of the projects that they're going to do. I know their infrastructure is failing, like all the other golf courses that are out there with the age of the equipment. So, yeah, when I... Something I never looked at when I forwarded the letter to... Should we get them to give us an amount? This way we kind of know if they are asking?
Well, I'd suggest that we probably should know, because I would also suggest that they're probably going to ask the City of Coal Lake for some support and a letter also?
No, I can't see the City of Coal Lake asking them at all, because the City of Coal Lake, right now, is one of their main competitors, which is the Coal Lake Golf and Country Club. And that's one of the reasons why these guys are having a lot of challenges with their grant funding and money coming in, because unlike the City of Coal Lake, Grand Center Golf Course is not... It's not funded by municipality, right, where City of Coal Lake is? So I'm not entirely sure.
Do we have any idea how much their grant is?
No, I... Let's table this letter, and I'll reach out to them, and I'll ask them that.
Good idea, Counselor. Should I make that motion?
Could I ask for clarification when this would be tabled? Till? Our next council meeting is December twenty second.
Yeah, it'll be the twenty sixth, yeah.
Twenty sixth?
Next council meeting.
Twenty second?
Twenty second? Do we don't have a meeting on twenty sixth?
Not this year.
Can we do a special meeting?
You could tell them we would finance four hundred thousand, but we had to build a couple sidewalks, and Mike's worried instead, so...
So we have the motion to table this. All in favor? It was the table list request for a CFEP grant application letter until the twenty second of December. So next, correspondence and information. There's several hundred letters there that you have to read through.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Deputy Reeve and Counsel. You can see the list of correspondence we've received. There's some minutes from some of our community groups, some congratulatory letters to the new council. There is, I would point out, there is a support request from the Bonneville Centralized High School. And I'm just trying to think of what else there is here that's... There's just... You could certainly read through the list of correspondence. There is the MD Donations Promotional Items Update and the Council Action Report.
So has anybody got any concerns or questions about any of those letters? The ones from the schools, I think our administration has handled those, and some of them were pressed for funding for sports programs. So we've actioned those ones. There was one that was a... The Fishing Lake Meati Association was asking for a meet and greet, so I'm not sure how the CAO has actioned that one, or if we're... That was eight point one six?
Typically, on all the letters, Mr. Deputy Reeve and Counsel, we usually respond with a thank you. We've received your letter. I'm not sure what the action plan is going to be regarding that particular letter.
We could reach out to the Reeve and just ask him if he's got intentions or whatever to handle that one?
Absolutely.
So if there's no other concerns there, we can take a look at the Council Action Report.
I just have a question. Like, what were those... What are those paintings in there all about? What is that?
Paintings?
Right? Is that just like someone sent paintings?
Yeah.
Yep, that's exactly what it was.
It almost seemed like an old guy, someone, an adult that maybe wrote like a child. I don't know. And you know who that is?
I think it was maybe a younger guy writing. He's trying to get his art out there. I'm not sure. Interesting.
Do we need a motion to receive the letter's information?
Yeah, I'm just gonna... I did have a discussion. So Council Action Report, you can take it through. I did have a discussion with the CAO about that one, and he did promise me that they'd kind of look at those.
Yeah, and Mr. Deputy Reeve and Counsel, I would mind going through the Council Action List, item by item, just so there are issues. Some of them are not as clear-cut as the Council Action Item might make it be. So the first one, which is the oldest on the list, was a Resolution nineteen zero four nine, an RFD required for fireworks permits and discharge with the MD to provide recommendations. If the General Manager could... Because there's a couple here that I think that are older that I think Mr. Yans could probably shed some light as to why there's been very little activity on some of these files.
Okay, so for the first one, we did have discussion with the Fire Chief in regards to the fireworks one. They were hoping, the Fire Authority was hoping to change then our bylaw, and they had some other ones that needed changing, so we were waiting for them to come back to us for those changes. So this would come back through the Fire Authority, changing of the fire bylaw. So we were waiting on the recommendations coming back from them.
Okay, I would just maybe ask that you don't wait, and you just kind of get hold of the Fire Chief.
Yeah, and I'll talk to the new Fire Chief, and we can have those discussions.
The second one was Resolution number nineteen four twenty seven, the Holes Law Repeater Tower. The notes were that access has been granted to the tower to the radio club, finishing up the MOU with the club.
Yeah, so that's what we're sitting with right now. We just need to finally meet. And we had our lawyers draft the MOU. They currently have all the equipment and have access to the tower with their equipment, so we just have to have the signed agreement. So again, we'll finish that up.
Resolution number nineteen two fifty, Ardmore Remaining Works for Plan for Approval with Cost Analysis. Mr. Bispalko, the comments were engineering awarded to MPE. Project has been split up. Portions of the remaining works are in progress for twenty twenty one. I believe that's the Forty-Eighth Avenue, and I believe that that... It hasn't made it to the action list, but that Forty-Eighth Avenue Underground is completed, is it not? Or virtually completed?
To answer the question, yes. We have part of the Forty-Eighth Avenue... To answer the question, yes, uh, we have part of the forty-eighth Avenue, uh, in Ardmore, or sorry, part of the, uh, the whole thing. Forty-eighth Avenue, East and West, has been completed. That's the answer to that question. So, was there another question in there?
Nope, that was, uh, well, maybe, uh, Resolution nineteen two eighty-nine, bring back aesthetic design, aesthetic design for rear side of fire hall. And the last notes were that Brian would discuss with the previous general manager.
Uh, that has been completed, uh, I, that's just an oversight for me, not, um, updating that, but that, that has been completed a long time ago.
So can you just expand on that one, though? When you're talking about the fire hall, uh, rear design, what, what did you actually end up doing, because it was never presented?
Okay, for all of council, uh, there really wasn't anything, uh, additional. Uh, what the request was, was for the, um, for the rear of the fire halls to have that, uh, s- s- train stage look. Uh, so we did that by incorporating the overhang and the pillars, uh, that kind of thing. It, it didn't change the design at all for the, uh, for it. Um, this was redesigned prior, and, uh, and it was, uh, Munichor was actually the one that kind of spurred this one on, and we just kind of worked with them to see what would be, uh, what would look good, and, and go with the flow of having the staging area there and then this, uh, this building.
Yeah, so I guess I just, so is it done, you're saying? I thought the whole idea was to have somewhere to, yeah, to stage for quarters and stuff. So is there, like, benches and stuff on the backside and all that? Well, that's what the motion was for, eh?
For all of council, no, what, what there is, is there's a large pad on the backside of the, uh, of the hall, and, uh, it, it's a concrete pad with an overhang on it. Now, if, and, and I don't know the intent of council when this was discussed, that was, uh, prior to me taking, I think that was prior to me taking over this, uh, this project. So I'm not familiar with what the intent of it was, but, uh, if the intent was to have, uh, quads pull up to the fire hall and have them sitting at the building, uh, then it could work for that. Uh, I just wasn't sure if that was the intent.
Yeah, I thought that was a discussion at the time, was like a picnic table and a bench or something, so that people can stop and, and rest or whatever, right?
The, uh...
Yeah, it's right adjacent to, it actually is right adjacent to the staging area, so we could do something.
The, the structure is there, so there is a pad there, there are no tables or, or benches there, that kind of thing at this point. But, uh, there's, it, it's created for, it, it has enough space for that, uh, with, under the overhang and everything like that.
Yeah, if you talk nice to Bone, he might rent, rent you one at a discounted rate there, so...
Fifty dollars for the weekend.
I'll get, I'll get the daily rate instead of the weekend rate. But yes, it, uh, it does have that capability.
Uh, the next one would be a Resolution number nineteen six oh eight, an R.F.D. for false alarm information, uh, the fire departments.
So yes, when this was brought up last time, the fire authority was not keeping track of false alarms, they did have false alarms, obviously. Um, so they never did come back with any of stats relating to false alarms for fires. At the time when this was discussed, there was worry that they were getting a number of calls that they responded to, but there was no need for them, so... We were just going to bring back the information back to council, so I'll follow it up with the new chief and see if they do keep the stats now, so...
Uh, Resolution number twenty-four oh eight, um, as of September twenty-seventh, and I believe that nothing has changed, we're still awaiting ministerial sign-off. Resolution number twenty-six sixty, I believe, again, that was reported, uh, back here on September twenty-seventh, we're still waiting ministerial sign-off. Um, uh, uh, Resolution twenty-one oh two nine, um, bring recommendations on implementing effective use and placement of fire equipment, including business plan to certify our mechanics to work on fire equipment and review of the aged life of the current truck inventory. Uh, that was completed by council, council had decided on extending the fire apparatus to twenty years. Um, so that could actually come off the list. R.F.D. required Resolution number twenty-one oh two eight, options for the future Riverhurst bin site, um, as either the M.D. own or land near. And we are still, we are still discussing that even at the G.M.'s table, even as recently as a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, so money's still in there for the, if we do go ahead with the bin site construction at the Riverhurst site. But again, it all depends if T.N.U.'s going to build their, the shop or not, so...
Uh, and I'll, I'll explain to council what my issue is, one point five million or one point six million, what, what's the number?
Purchase that?
Well, to build, yeah.
Or is one point six?
Um, it's a greater shed, I don't see any reason to spend one point six million dollars on a greater shed. Um, so, uh, we're, we've been investigating other options as to how we could build a greater shed a whole lot cheaper than one point six million. Buying an existing building that would cost us a million and a half dollars, renovate it for a greater shed, um, when I could go out and probably put up a U.F.A. building for literally half that price, um, on a piece of property that we own, so... We're still discussing it, um, there, there's, uh, Matt has already made, uh, other arrangements for the bin sites, or they're staying there, I'm not, um...
Yeah, currently, they're still at the hall, um, temporarily, and then until council decides if we're going to go to our own quarter or build that another site, so...
You better not dismiss that, because we just finished paying thirty grand for a ten-by-twelve shed, so... One point six might not look too bad.
Might look too bad?
We're saving money.
We're, we're saving money. I'm trying to find ways to save some more money, we can, uh, we can build, uh, I can build a double bay greater shed for well under one point six million dollars, that's, that's, um, um... Uh, Resolution twenty-one oh thirty, consult with the town of Bonneville, present the feasible options for giving B.F.R.A. control and ownership of all fire apparatus. Um, at, we're meeting with the town of Bonneville on Friday for a joint council meeting, and I believe B.F.R.A. is on the agenda for, um, for discussions, um, on, on Friday. Uh, and then the rest are all relatively, are all relatively new, um, some of them are budget-related, and of course, as the budget was just, uh, approved today, any of these ones, uh, that have to do with budget or strat plan, um, are still just in progress, the later ones. So I, I hope that answers some of the questions that there, that, that might have been outstanding on the council action list.
Thank you, C.A.O. So do we need a motion to accept all those, or... Here's just info. So eight point one, correspondence and information, or did we, sorry, did we need a motion to turn it over?
Yes, please.
Also, we need a motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion to accept that as information.
Counsel Crick makes that motion, all in favor? So eight point one, um... Oh, we got tons, we got tons. Just reports? No. Mr. C.A.O., is any of those correspondence that we have to discuss or go over from eight point one on?
I don't believe so.
Anybody got any questions about any of those?
I, I just have one question about the, uh, request for provincial, so those people have, those all went to the right people for, okay.
I got it. Okay.
For, uh, industry liaison meeting?
Uh, thank you, uh, uh, Counsel Kreviak, and through, uh, the chair and the rest of, uh, um, council. We have been attempting to have an industry liaison committee meeting. However, a couple of the large industry partners who would be at that meeting will not meet, um, in person, uh, with us as long as there are, um, uh, as long as everybody, as long as not everybody has a mandatory vaccination, or has a vaccination. The, uh, the, uh, industry are quite adamant, um, even in their own business about that, so we are, uh, we're trying to arrange one now virtually. Um, and I'm trying to get everybody through virtually, Robin's been working on this for probably the last couple of weeks.
I will also not meet with the people who are double vaccinated unless they have a rat test as well, because they could be spreading the virus also.
We do have, um...
The two people who have passed away from this new Omnicom virus were double vaccinated.
Yeah, we do have vaccinated, uh, council members, if you need someone to fill in, just saying that.
Um, according to Counsel Kreviak, we are no longer allowed to meet.
Okay, we'll, we'll, uh, have, uh, reports and questions from council, so we'll start with Counsel Fadef.
Uh, pretty quiet, we had, uh, R.M.A., which was good, um... F.C.S.S. conference, uh, was a Thursday and Friday, unfortunately, I couldn't attend on a Thursday, so I was there on the Friday morning. Uh, it's kind of not great doing it virtually, uh, I think, uh, in person is always great, but it was a, it was a good sessions. And, uh, we had a waste reduction, uh, meeting, uh, year-end, uh, we, I think Counselor, uh, Deputy Reeve has, has got some notes on that, and, uh, I will get him to do that, and that was it for me. Oh, no, we had a chamber mixer that I showed up to yesterday, and, uh, nobody was there, and I realized I was, uh, a year early. I had in my, it was night, it was, uh, twenty twenty-two, December, and I showed up yesterday, so... Yeah, yeah, I, I know, right, so, uh, it's good there, thank you.
Economic Development? I have a few notes on it. It wasn't there? Thought you were... Counsel Crick?
I made a bunch of notes last night, but I forgot to save them, so they all disappeared. But anyways, uh, at R.M.A. conference, had a chance to ask the, ask of the environment minister to allow fish harvest out of Bear Trap Lake and out of Moose Lake, and got a call from the ministry yesterday, so, working on that anyways, I don't know if we're going to get anywhere, but we'll keep trying. That's it?
Where can we go fishing?
You can go fishing in Saskatchewan whenever you want, keep whatever you like, too. Um, and then the B.R.F.A. meeting, we've, uh, can you hear me? Okay. Sorry. With B.R.F.E., we've, uh, offered Dan Heaney the position as fire chief, and I see in the email that he's accepted that now. So that's good to know that we've got that taken care of. Uh, I was also at the F.C.S.S. conference through F.C.S.S. in Bonneville, in virtual, and I agree it's better in person. And that's it for me for now.
Counsel Carson?
Uh, well, yeah, since the last council, we did have our strategic planning, uh, meeting, and then the R.M.A., which, uh, spoke about it a bit. Um, I did have a library meeting that was, um, it was pretty uneventful business as usual, just welcoming the new board, really, and kind of getting everyone abreast to what's going on there. Uh, Regional Economic Development Committee meeting, um, so we did talk about our new branding strategy, uh, that I think is getting presented to council perhaps next week, is that when it was? Esther, I don't, yeah?
It's fifteen twenty-second, I'm not sure yet.
Okay, and then, uh, so we'll see more on that coming up. Um, and then, you know, Mark, or the Economic Development Officer, you know, is leaving, so I'm not sure what the future of that committee is going to look like quite yet, so... Um, I guess that's all I had, I know I had two library meetings, I guess, but, uh, hey? Yeah, that's all I had, I guess, so, R.M.A., that's a big one.
Counsel Slitchak?
Yeah, November third, uh, twenty-third week there, we went to R.M.A. meetings, it was very good experience there, meeting other councils from other municipalities and counties. Had a good, uh, talk with them, learnt a lot on that meetings. And on, uh, November twenty, uh, the end of November here, we had public consultations with, uh, Cherry Grove, Ardmore, La Corrie, and Glendon, which was very informative to me and helped, uh, me learn a lot, and nice to have, we had, uh, quite a few people come out in La Corrie. And on December third, we did our Lakeland Lodge meeting, and, uh, met the new, met committee members, and we're going to be having another one here next week.
Thank you. Counsel Kreviak?
Thank you, I was with these guys. Most of the stuff has been covered already. Uh, F.C.S.S. had a meeting there, there's a handy bus that's owned by the town of Bonneville, and they have enough funding for two thousand twenty-two. They were thinking of asking the M.D. to help support funding after two thousand twenty-two, so something to think about. Uh, lodge meeting, uh, we used to have an assessment of three hundred thousand dollars, a requisition from Bonneville and Coal Lake, and it went up to eight hundred thousand, because we were doing, uh, building new buildings. In Bonneville here, we lost thirty rooms, and in Coal Lake, we didn't have a full lodge, so we lost a lot of revenue. So we moved up the requisition to eight hundred thousand, and then last year back to five hundred thousand, and our share was sixty-three percent. So now, uh, because of the shortfall, because we still have empty rooms, we're going to be asking for six hundred thousand for requisition from the two, from the two, uh, counties or M.D.s, whatever, from Bonneville and, uh, Coal Lake. Not sure how the impact of I.D. three forty-nine will have, because this goes on assessment, so our assessment will be higher, so maybe our share will be more than sixty-three percent now because of that. Not sure. So in Bonneville, we still have Bonneville Lodge, ten vacancies, Coal Lake, twenty vacancies, and that's about it for me, thank you.
Okay, I was hoping Reeve wouldn't come back, because I want to give my report, and he doesn't like it when they're, like, two hours long, so I was hoping to squeeze it in before he got back. Two minutes. Two minutes, I'll try to talk fast, so... R.M.A., interesting, we, we're all there, but a couple of, you know, interesting discussion topics, we all know, but the, the people watching don't. A.U.M.A., Alberta Urban Municipalities wants to change their name, and they're going, going for it, and they're going to call themselves A.M., so, so Alberta Municipalities, and we're all Alberta Municipalities, so it kind of, kind of snubs us a bit that, that they're trying to sort of throw us under their, their wing there, but... So that was a discussion topic, uh, we also talked about R.C.M.P., and there's kind of a good presentation by the ministers on, on the R.C.M.P. Most Alberta, uh, communities are, are happy with the R.C.M.P., but there's another side to that story that, and it's, they brought it out, that, that conference, was that, um, the R.C.M.P. is controlled by the federal government out of Ottawa, so they can take the R.C.M.P. from us anytime they want. If there's, like, some big floods in Winnipeg or whatever, we, we kind of lose those positions for whatever time they need them, and, and we're also paying for positions that we, we don't have. And so we just, I guess their point was, there may be another good reason to replace, you know, come up with our provincial police force, that we would have way more control over our, our police, and it, and it may be the same folks, but they would be under the control of the provincial government, not federal, so... That was kind of an interest, interesting discussion. Um, there's lots of other topics covered, one of them is, that for me was somewhat interesting, was the, uh, the hydrogen economy and Alberta Energy, uh, largest producer of hydrogen in, in Canada, two point four million tons a year, and I think most of that's Edmonton in that area. And so the provincial government does have what they call the Alberta Hydrogen Roadmap, which they released on November fifth, so you can, you can Google the Alberta Hydrogen Roadmap, because it's looking at, like, a two-point-five trillion-dollar-a-year industry for hydrogen in, for Canada, sort of out of Alberta, driven out of Alberta, so hopefully hydrogen's the way to go. Uh, we had a presentation by ATCO talking about, uh, renewable natural gas, so methane, but also talking about, uh, adding hydrogen to our natural gas, so... They say by two thousand and twenty-two, they'll have up to twenty percent hydrogen in most of our natural gas. And then they're looking, ATCO is actually looking for communities interested in going to hundred percent hydrogen, so kind of an, an interesting topic. Um, there's more there, but we don't need to cover that, because Reeve's listening, so we'll go into some other stuff. I'm kidding. Um, economic development, we did have that, and, and we met, um, Counsel Carson, talked somewhat about that. We'll have a better presentation, because there's a few initiatives that Economic Development Officer wanted to, uh, put through to council. But we do, we had a branding exercise, and we're going to bring that back to council to kind of look at our final branding, uh, sort of ideas. And then there's also discussions about, uh, different, different, um, initiatives throughout the community. One was a facade or a storefront improvement, uh, kind of grant or whatever, and then a taxation incentive program for new developments. And so there was things that I think will be brought back to council. Uh, we talked a bit about business licenses again at the M.D., because now it's voluntary, but it's not maybe working as well as it could be, so we could have a discussion about business licenses. And then there was a bit of a talk about, or discussion about Coal Lake First Nations Renewable Energy, so Coal Lake First Nations, I think, got quite a grant to do a renew, renewable energy study, and so I'm not sure, Esther, if that's going to be brought back to us, but that was one of the topics we did discuss.
It ended up on my desk this morning.
Oh, did it, okay. Uh, let's see. We had the Waste Reduction Committee, uh, discuss landfill signs, and we've done some, I think, good jobs on, on putting up signs at our landfills now, so as people are driving through them, they know, actually know where it's a landfill and where they're at, and we put up a bunch of no dumping signs, and that's helping. They said twenty-four no dumping signs were put up. And then Waste Management Staff are actually monitoring some of the bin sites to make sure... actually monitoring some of the bin sites to make sure that, some of them were getting kind of out of, out of control and a bit unruly. But that the staff was actually helping talk to folks and tell them what they couldn't dump there and what they could. And we did a bunch of concrete crushing, crushed forty-one hundred tons of concrete. And so it kind of was a break even. We recovered the concrete and paid for the crushing. K and K Recycling does all our recycling at the, metal recycling at the landfills. And so that expires in, in Trevor. We're going to tender out a, for a new contract, maybe with K and K again. And I think that's it. Thank you. Mr. Reeve?
Did you touch on that, do you have a?
Yes, I did. Well, the truck did.
Okay.
I'm sure most of the reports are, it was attended, lots of them. What I wanted
to speak about, one of the things that was kind of cool for me, I went to HEB school. Class called me in to, they wanted me to present to council initiative that they had for spading of cats and dogs in, throughout the M.D. And I said, well, it'd be better if you guys chose someone from the class here to represent yourself and come as a class and have a speaker and do a presentation. I said, council, it'd be, it'd be great, great to come in and do that. And then I could show them around the building. So it was pretty cool. The kids are pretty excited. They're not getting a lot of, you know, they haven't been out of the classrooms, and it's getting kind of tense. And so to come for a little field trip, they were just so pumped. And I don't know how it's going to work, but we're going to try to make it work. And then one of them, her name was Mrs. Yedlowski, she took me to a few classes. I went to see, they're pretty pumped to see someone different in the class. And it was a great, and then there's, they're doing a thing on the rock, which is pretty cool. So there, this one kid, hey, are you the rock? And I go, no, not even close. So I says, well, I can arm wrestle someone, though. So there was this kid in the back. He's a young man, he's a special needs guy that they have in the school there. So I rolled up my sleeve and we put on sanitizer and masks. And it was pretty cool. We got to arm wrestle, arm wrestle this young fellow, and it was a lot of fun.
Did you win?
You know, I, yeah, maybe I did, yeah. It's tough for me. But, but the greatest thing that I seen that was happening there, they have a, a group of kids with mental health that they have a class, and they're teaching these kids to recognize mental health. And so they can spot it, and then they can bring it forth to the, the teachers or the lady that's in charge of that. So these young kids had some questions. They, pretty, pretty sharp bunch of kids. They're, they're starting this new program there to kind of, to work with other kids that, kids know that they can come to these kids and talk to them. And then they can take them to whoever's in charge there. So I thought, what a great initiative that's happening in that, that school. So I was very, very, opened my eyes. And like I said, these kids are pretty sharp. So I was pretty impressed. So that's all I have.
Okay. That's another guy here.
Do we have a, is there any call station, either? Yes.
Yes. Okay. Any motion to approach call station? All in favor?
You're probably thinking we'd be done by telling you that back. Are you buried?
No, but they had these, I'm not feeling the greatest. And they had these plants in that crest law. It smells like lavender. Oh my goodness, that's the worst smell ever. I can't stand it.
Thanks, ladies. You know, if you cut your fingernails, you could have probably typed that a lot quicker.
Just joking.